Okay.
Start again, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will come to order the June 6th, 2022. This is the zoning board of appeals for the town of New Canaan. When we call your case, we'll ask for the presenter to identify themselves and the property in question. State your request of the board and identify your hardships and the reasons for your request. Remember, the hardship cannot be financial in nature and it runs with the land. The board will then ask you questions, after which you will have another opportunity to present and a chance to speak. You will be able to sum up your request and we are recording the meeting, so please make sure you do say, state your name. The board will then go into business session and discuss and make a decision. There are five voting members on the board and it takes four positive votes to be granted a variance. Lynn, could you take role for us?
Sure, Laura Edmonds.
Present.
John Mahoney.
John?
Sorry, present.
Cynthia Doe.
Present.
Luke Toshian.
Present.
Jessica Cardone. She's absent. Becky Walsh.
Present.
Richard Keratou.
Present.
Okay. So we'll have, the first item is 105 Elm Street. We have Laura, John, Cynthia, Luke. And Rich, if you could be the voting member on this one. Also, okay, 105 Elm Street zoning variance upon application of David Rucci, Lampert Tuie and Rucci LLC authorized agent for Donald Hersham Jr. Owners for variance of sections 4.8 point K to allow second floor area of 14.5% to increase to 20% in the retail A zone at 105 Elm Street, map T, block 43, lot 812.
Hi, good evening. You're upset?
Yeah.
I had June 7th too, for some reason on my presentation order, so I'm not sure. I probably said it all.
Glad we started to record it again.
Sorry about that. Okay, so it's.
Maybe that's where I saw it.
You probably did. David Rucci, Lampert Tuie and Rucci, I'm here this evening representing Donald Hersham and his family in connection with their building over at 105 Elm Street. Mainly known as where Soleil sits, but it's actually where Fat Face is, that we're talking about that sort of small area off to the side here. It's not actually the Soleil space we're talking about. We're talking about the building next to it. It's sort of is right next to that somewhat small alleyway where the movie theater is. Also joined tonight by Adam Zaka and Ramsey Zaka, both who are part of Z Hospitality Group. They actually own and run the Soleil group. And they are tenants right now in Soleil and they're looking to potentially become tenants next door as well for something completely different than what they do today. It's not a part of Soleil. It's not a part of that restaurant in and of itself. And I also have Fadi Rascala here. He's the architect on this particular project. And yeah, if you can just start moving through this presentation, that'd be great. What we're looking for today is to essentially increase the second floor space on this building. And in my narrative, I actually say, what I meant to say was that the allowable square feet, square footage on the second floor is 665 feet. Square feet, we actually only have about 460. We have 10% right now on the second floor. Looking at this building in and of itself, you see the Soleil building, then you see the, the property next door. That's the one that we're trying to add a second floor to, to try to get some more space. The hardships that we have on this particular project are that this building has an architectural and topographical hardship. So they have two hardships with respect to the building in and of itself. And those are the fact that number one, they have two entrances, right? They have an entrance off the back, which we all know of, sort of all the other buildings that move up towards the west on Elm, on Elm Street. And they also have obviously an entrance on the front. And the problem is, is that from a topographical standpoint, they need that ingress and egress access based on the fact that they're on grade at the top of that property. And all the buildings on the rear of that property are on grade and they all have accesses to the rear and in the front. And then secondly, one of the issues that we've run into with this is that architecturally, if you all remember, the second floor space up there is mostly a big landing and staircase to get to the bottom. That takes up about five and a half percent of the second floor space on this building. So you have about four and a half percent. It's a small little office off to the right. Then you have this large entrance way and this large staircase, which is another five and a half percent, essentially getting us to 10%. What we're trying to go is from 10% to 20%, okay? If you could just move through the next slide, please. So I'm just going to show you, obviously here's the rear of the property that you know, this is the entrance where you come in the back. And you can see like that right hand side window is sort of the office and then the left hand side is actually the entire staircase. If you keep moving forward, please. We can go kind of quickly through these because it's just giving you sort of an idea. And you can see here how the second floor, all these other buildings have second floors on them. In fact, we'll get to an exhibit later on where almost every, every single building on the back is almost 100% of their second floor goes over their first floor. So allowing a small increase, I consider a small increase of 5% to this Soleil building is really not going to do much as far as not being part of this particular neighborhood as every single building on this neighbor, on this street, Elm Street, from the rear and from the front are almost over 100% of the second floor. If you can keep moving on, please. So here's your existing conditions on the property. The A slot is showing the Soleil space. The D spot is showing the Fat Face play, the old Fat Place place or what we're talking about. And then you'll see sort of in the bottom there, it's not that easy to read. I don't know if that can be expanded just a tiny bit down in that chart on the, on the left hand side. You'll see that the existing space, you know, we have about 5,000 square feet roughly of total buildable area. And the Soleil restaurant has about 2,000 of it and there's another, you know, roughly 2,000 next door. And then you'll see that the office space is 205 square feet, about four and a half percent. And the landing and stairwell take up about five and a half, take up five and a half percent, which gets us to 10%. We're asking to basically fit out another 460 square feet. And that's another 10%. And if you just move through the next slide, please, which ends up at 20%. So I just wanted to show you from an existing condition perspective. I don't, I don't know if you can, if everyone can see that. I'm seeing people's pictures on the side, but if you can see it, that's great. Essentially, you'll see here that B is the office space, D and C together, and you'll see how C takes up a majority of that particular space. And I'm also showing you sort of a sight line from the front of the building. Oh, and before I forget, while we're requesting a variance this evening for an extra 5% to get up to 20%, we need, we have to go to another commission. We have to go to the planning and zoning commission to show them all our architectural plans from the outside of the building to make sure they're okay with it as well. Because since we're in the village district, we have to get a site plan approval as well. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention that it's going, this is going to get a second look also just as far as the architecture and what it's going to look like on the outside of the building. Can you just move forward again, please? I'm just going to show a couple of pictures. You can just kind of move through these kind of quickly. Here's the door, the landing. Here's kind of what your landing looks like in the interior. Here's, you're seeing that whole left hand space that essentially takes up most of our square footage on the second floor with our staircase, providing means of ingress and egress and ingress. There's a staircase going down. There's that window sort of on the left hand side showing that essentially all this space is, you know, not really usable from a second floor perspective. It's really just dead space on this particular building. So once again, sort of here's our proposed project. You'll see E is showing what we're adding to this particular space, this additional 10%. And in this particular case, it's a restaurant. But you know, we're not specific to the use here in and of itself because we're asking for an architectural hardship for this building itself. But what we're proposing to put in here is an office space, a cooler, some dry storage goods and liquor, and a liquor store. And I'm sorry, liquor store and a liquor area to hold the liquor. If you can keep moving through. This is just showing you kind of your sight line as to how that's going to look. You're not going to be able to see this from the street. And you'll see that sight line is the same one that you saw in the earlier, in, in the earlier plan. It shows it's still kind of your site's still going over the top of that and you're still going to see that white area.
David, Luke Tashin here. Yeah. If you're standing on the movie, at the movie theater, like facing it.
Yeah.
Say you're like near the front left corner, would you see this from in front of the movie theater?
I think you would see some of it, yes, but they're very close, those two buildings. So I think if you're standing right in front of that window in the movie theater, it's hard to tell. My guess is you might be able to see some of it, yes. And that's really something, Luke, that we need to get a kind of a separate approval from, from T and Z. Cause they're responsible for any sort of building that goes above any of these, these existing buildings in the retail A zone. They have, they have, I mean, you obviously can look at this issue as well. But we also have to go in front of them to get their approval based on the fact that, you know, they're responsible for the village district in the way it looks. And what it's going to look like walking up and down that street. Can you move to the next picture, please? To the next slide, please? So once again, I'm just showing you the interior layout here again. We can kind of move through that. We've already seen that already. And then once again, the exterior layout showing a little bit more, just kind of the darkened look in that and what the colors are going to, not the colors, but what the materials are going to be. And then keep moving, please. And then I just want to talk a little bit. So I mentioned earlier, so here's what all the rest of the buildings look like on that street. Right? If you can just, yeah, thank you. You can see that, you know, 95 Elm Street, that's the movie theater. Only has about 29%. They're at 1920. And then 111, 125 and 63 are all 100% or more up the street. And all of those have access from the rear of the building, although the one in the far, far end, the SIG building has access on the side of, of the top of that hill. You know, Ms. Edmonds knows that, walking up from the real estate office there, they kind of have it on the, on the side there, not necessarily on the back where that, those windows are.
David, Luke Tashin speaking. To the right of the movie theater, I guess those would be numbers lower than 95?
To the, that is the movie theater.
No, yeah, but I'm saying go to the right of it. So it'd be a lower number. Those are all single story buildings and across the street, everything's single story. Think American, Dunkin' Donuts.
Well, I'll show you. I have some pictures to show you. The only building that's lower is La Pan, Kitty Anne. But they don't have access in the rear of their property. So there's no access. They have, they have access through the side of the property, not through the rear.
What about the ones further down like La Payne and Elm that are single story?
La Pan does, yes. La Pan does. But then the next building, 71 Elm Street, that has two floors, because I used to be in those offices. And above, Ann Taylor has two floors.
How do they get out of the back of La Payne and Elm? Is there a staircase there?
La Pan, well, they have the side entrance. Right? They have a side entrance because you go down that alleyway and they can get out through the side, but they don't have a second floor.
What about Elm?
Elm does not have a second floor, I don't believe. Unless it's, I don't, but remember, they're not accessed from the rear either. From the topography perspective, they don't have a parking lot above. But we can, if you go through some of these pictures, I've actually taken pictures of all of those. So here's, you know, looking down the street that we just talked about, right? So to the left is Elm there with, and then you see that these others all have two stories in the back there and they go all the way down the street. Probably ending at Uncorked, I think is only, is only single, is only one floor. And then you see going up the street from Soleil, you see all the second floors there. And like I said, the reason why we're, we believe, we were asserting there's a hardship is based on the fact that you have an entrance and egress from the rear of the property. So there's two things that we're looking at to Mr. Toshin's point. Looking at the accessed areas, how you get in and out of these buildings, okay? Because you have to get in and out of buildings for the rear. And then for those other buildings, they don't have access through the rear of the property. There's no parking lot. There's no driveway. It's just not the same situation, right? Because you're in the people's lot behind the other ones going up and down the street to the east of the property. Here's the rear of Soleil. You can see that it sort of sits down a little bit. And this construction will go, you know, back to the left hand part, sort of where the wooden fence is right now. And back to the rear. So it's also going to be nice to get, all that area is going to get cleaned up as well. And you can see how they sort of, the, the height is not going to be any higher than that building next to Soleil to the west. That one, thank you. Let me keep going down, please. You can see there's already some screening there from the, that's the movie theater and the dumpster in the movie theater back there. I mean, honestly, in the end, I think it's going to look a heck of a lot nicer from what they're going to do on the property. And then if you can go down again, please. We asked the chamber to give some support. And they did. They put a letter into the file indicating that they support the project for a couple of reasons. I mean, not just because we're trying hard to keep businesses in this particular town as much as possible and keeping these spaces filled. And I think we all know that one of the, one of the main drivers of our spaces is restaurant. And retail's been really hard in that particular spot. They've had four to five tenants in the last 10 years in the spot that we're talking about today. And if you look at not only what the chamber says, but you go through the plan of conservation and development, one of the things that they recommend is that, you know, and this is more of a planning and zoning commission issue, but they really want to try and keep anchor tenants in town. Make sure we don't have any sort of empty spaces in any way, shape or form. And I would say that, you know, Soleil and Z Hospitality have been one of, you know, our greatest tenants. I mean, they've been in since the 90s. And they've been a great supporter of our town and they've done a great job in filling that space. And we think they do, they're going to do a really great job moving forward for the next phase. You know, there's another, there's another part of the planning and conservation development, which I'm going to, I'd like, I'm going to bring up again with the planning and zoning commission at a later date, which is something different. But this particular regulation came in about 2015. Obviously, because you can see all these other buildings have been built out more than 15%, whether they were existing at the time or whether there was something else. I think that what was happening back at that time, if I remember correctly, was they were, they were scared at the time that these buildings were going to go way up. And they were going to kind of create some sort of loom factor on the street. And that was not something the town wanted to, to really entertain. You know, they didn't want it to become, you know, like Westchester County is great on a lot of levels, but you go through some of these towns in Westchester County and you have two, three, four stories sitting above some of these retail spots. One of the things in the planning and conservation development, they talk about is the fact that, you know, when you have not only the fact to keep these are, are good tenants around, but one of the other things they talk about in page 39 of it is the fact that you have to look at some of these like forum based rules. A rule like this one in per se, like it says 15% no matter what. And you have to look at that rule and say, is that really something that we need to, you know, really look harshly at or should we really be trying to work with other tenants, other owners of the properties? Just to finally get to that next step where we can keep our town thriving. And I just throw that out there because I think it's important, not only for this board, but for all these boards that, you know, listen, I sit on the Chamber of Commerce as well. You know, we have to do everything that we can to keep these stores viable. And I think by asking for an extra 5%, essentially 230 square feet to build out this top space of this is going to be not only helpful for this particular potential tenant, but also moving forward for this building. I mean, this building is really hamstrung, I believe, based on the fact that it has to have this huge staircase that they don't even use, right? For, at least not for any sort of space. It's just dead space for the most part. And, you know, they, and then the fact that they have everybody else on the street moving forward has anywhere from 30% to 100% from that block up. You know, across the street, most of the buildings from let's say Starbucks over, they're two stories until you get to where the Whitney shop is, and then that goes down to one story. Then you get to the Bank of America. Once again, that goes to two stories. Keep moving down. You have the Silverberg buildings where the wave is now and where the two stories, that's all two stories. So we're not really talking about a huge ask here from the sense it's not going to fit into this particular neighborhood. And we think it is consistent and fits in perfectly with the neighborhood, especially from the rear of the property. And like I said, you're not going to see much of it from the second part, from the street of the property.
David is.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
David, it's John Mahoney. Question for you. I actually office in 111 Elm and I'm sitting here now on the second floor. So the one difference between our building and the Soleil building is the ground floor tenants don't have egress out the back. They only have egress off of, ingress, egress off of Elm Street. Is why does Elm have the second means of egress? Is that because, or I'm sorry, why does the subject have a second means of egress? Is that because it's a restaurant? Is it because the rules change? You know, what's the need for the, the stairway?
Yeah, I think my best guess is, because I mean, this is a 1925 building. But my best guess is, is they needed it for fire safety, for ingress and egress from the rear of the property, because that's where it was being entered and exited from. And they don't have the ability to go out a different way. At least not initially from this particular site. That's the only thing that I can think of in this particular building. I mean, this rule only came in in 2015. So I don't know, I don't think there was any reason or rationale back at the time other than it had to be some sort of fire and safety, you know, issue for that particular building. That's the only thing that I can guess. I mean, the reg, you know, don't forget the zoning regulations didn't even come into effect until 31. So there were no zoning regulations when this building was first built. And then over the years, like I said, it didn't, doesn't seem like until 2015 that I started to see this 15% rule.
Yeah, I guess certainly in my building, like Groove has not been there, you know, Groove doesn't have a second egress. They, they don't come up through the second floor to get out. So I'm just wondering why the difference in, in my building, 111 Elm is even older.
But you have access through the rear, correct?
On the second floor, we do, yes. But the first floor tenants, similar to Soleil or to this proposed use, do not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't. I mean, the rule came into effect in 2015 because they were worried about people over building second floors, really from a height perspective more than anything else. And one of the reasons I think they put it into the village district was because now if someone has to come and do anything to any of these buildings on Elm Street or the retail A zone, P and Z's got to approve it. And you know, we don't have an architectural review board here in New Canaan. So P and Z's sort of taking that on their own to be sure that they can control is not the right word, but they have oversight over these second floors. And so, you know, I can't answer why 111 doesn't. I don't know why Mr. Herscham didn't try to develop the second floor at an earlier time. He probably didn't even realize that the rule existed. That's what I find with most of the people who have buildings that all of a sudden like, wait, I don't understand everybody else who's done it. Why can't I do it? They probably just didn't know this reg came into effect. I honestly didn't know about it until I looked at this particular issue.
Thank you.
Do you know how long the construction will last? How long it will take?
It's a good question. I, I would have to ask Fadi, maybe Rascala, who's the architect, or Adam or Ramsey, if you have an idea. I mean, you know, obviously it's very possible that, you know, if we're not fortunate enough to receive a variance, you know, probably nothing will happen. So. But if we are fortunate enough to receive a variance, I'd have to ask those guys. So if you can either put on a Ramsey, Adam or Fadi, that would be great. Lynn. Do you want to answer that, Fadi or Adam?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Just to answer the previous question, it is probably because it was a restaurant, the manager had more than 40 occupants. You end less than 70. If you don't meet both simultaneously, less than 40 seats and less than 75 feet in drive, or you need two means of egress automatically.
Thank you.
I would say the construction, I would estimate it now, nothing has been planned, but I would think it would be between six to nine months. Most likely you will be able to keep it down to six months. This is for the structure on the roof that we are proposing.
This is Becky Walsh. Is, would the construction be mostly taking place in the rear? There wouldn't be anything you're doing in the front?
Yes, totally from the rear and probably no one would see from the front.
And there's no proposed seating upstairs from the restaurant?
It's all dry storage, a small office and the, you know, like it's called storage and dry storage and the small.
And, and just to be, so would the, would there be another, would the stairwell go up to that second floor or you would use these?
Existing stairwell.
The existing.
Stairwell would be useful for that, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not sure if there's any more questions moving forward or.
Any other questions from the board? Cynthia?
No, I don't have any questions. I would have to say, I've been listening to what has been said and I go back to the 90s when I used to manage the branch across the street, that building or that little storefront has been a revolving door. For whatever reason, we really haven't been able to keep a tenant in there very long. I'd like to think that what you're proposing is going to increase the viability of the space for whether it be for, you know, the tenant that you're proposing right now, having another restaurant come in or even some other type of tenant in the future. So I'm, I'm kind of of the mindset right now. I'm in favor of granting a variance. You know, based on what they're saying and also knowing that planning and zoning is also going to have to be involved in terms of maintaining the look and feel of the, the village and our downtown area.
Do we have any more questions? For the applicants?
Yeah, Rich Keratou, I do not.
All right. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application?
May I chime in?
Yes.
I'm the operator of Soleil. It's a family business. My father's on, but he's not showing. We've been in New Canaan since 1997. We love our landlord. He's been very, very good to us. It's been unfortunate that he hasn't had anyone who can remain in that next door space. And really the variance is only to get a couple more square feet to increase the likelihood that we can make it in that, in that area. I foresee that the restaurant would not be viable without just a couple more square feet to accommodate a little bit of storage, a place to put a computer and a few other things that we think that would really take the risk out of the equation. It would be somewhat difficult to make this happen and conform to the 15% because we'd only effectively only add 5% beyond the 10 that's already there on the roof. So I think this is a great thing. We're potentially excited about this and I hope that you all will be favorable in your approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak not in favor of the variance? Okay, if there's. Okay, if there's any last, any? Last comments, then we will go.
I mean, I would just say, just to sum it up that, you know, the staircase takes up almost five and a half percent of the second floor. So it's not like it's usable space for us. And, you know, I think that's important to recognize here. I mean, that's really our architectural hardship in the sense that we can't use that space. It's. Not like we can ever change that in any way, shape or form. And, you know, I I think that. You know, to Z hospitality and to their credit, I mean, they haven't come in and asked for 40% or 50%. I mean, they've really asked for the bare minimum. In this particular case, and it fits in with the rest of the buildings on the street. And, you know, I just want to make that point because when I've talked to them before, you know, they came to me and they said, listen, we're not just need to get enough here. And I also think it's important for this space regardless of whether the hospitality was there or not. It gives somebody another option to use this space. In a way that hopefully, you know, we can keep people in town. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The board will go into business session. Discussion.
I make a motion to allow it based on the topography of the lot. You know, with the higher elevation in the back, lower elevation in the front and acquiring that staircase of the bath that uses up. Pretty much all the area.
Okay.
I'd second the motion.
Okay, I was going to add that, you know, I I agree with what Cynthia is saying. We are we. We are all in favor of the vibrancy of our town and we do. You know, everything we can to see that. So want to help in that. And and the fact that. P and Z will have some oversight as to keeping the charm and the character. Of the building. I think it gives me a comfort level. So. We'll start the vote. Cynthia?
Owen, favor?
John?
Mahoney in favor?
Luke?
Ashton, favor?
Rich?
Rich Carrington in favor?
Laura Edmonds in favor? Okay, your variance is granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our next. Hold on one second.
Thanks, everybody. I'm going to sign off. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is 908 Silvermine Road. Zoning variance upon application of Frank De Niro authorized agent. I'm sorry.
It's Deerno.
Deerno, I'm sorry. Authorized agent for Patricia and Shant Chalian. Owners for variance of section 3.5 E.2 and 3.5 point D.1 to allow 9.6 feet inside yard where 12 feet is required. To pursue the variant granted in 1985, 25 feet is required in the zone and to allow for an increase of building coverage to. 4072 square feet where 3834 square feet is existing. And 2990 square feet is the allowable coverage in the one acre zone at 908 Silvermine Road. Map 49 block 112 lot 19. You may begin your presentation.
Good evening, board. I. Think you have the drawings on the screen, Lynn. You could show them. The share screen. So original house. We've got recorded 1896. Size lot to begin with. You'll see the rear accessory building, the original barn on the property. This is the first map that I was able to find. In land records and there were some other small outbuildings. This is really an old property. So the barn's still there. The smaller outbuildings in the very rare are not there anymore. They were taken down over the years. But the house is angled. Almost perpendicular to Silvermine Road, which was called Silvermine Avenue. And it created a. A very distinctive angle compared to what the side property is from the start. So. Architecturally, they wanted to face the road. And the property was really at a skewed angle to that road. And there's several properties like this on Silvermine Road. It's a very. Reentering road and you'll see result of that. So over the years. The house grew a little bit. It's it started a very small house and. The layout of the house. Central hall colonial, center hall colonial and the kitchens in the back. It was always a rear entrance to the back to the house. Nothing along the side where it could have made more sense. And you see they asked for a variance for a porch. That was shaded in on this map. On the north of the property and there begins the variance request. So that was 1955. It was granted. It was enough for that time. And then again. New owners as. The house grows and this is where they are now. A deck was added and they achieved their variance 1985. And the existing deck that you're seeing in these pictures. Is. 25 to 30 years old. And. It's falling down. So the clients, the owners had asked to. Come up with a better design for better use of the deck. So it actually is in better scale with lowering the deck to the property. It's a beautiful property, but they're really disconnected from their backyard by this deck. And the design that I proposed that we're seeking the variance for. It creates a side yard appeal that we're asking for because I've actually lowered the deck. To accommodate a little more connection to the backyard. I think you could see it. That's the existing deck now and I I tried to highlight where we are with it and you can see the. 25 foot setback line is pretty much going through. A third of the house. And this is the proposed foundation plan and then you'll see the next floor plan shows the deck. There's the elevations. So. We're moving the stair and we're lowering the deck to accommodate a little more connection to the backyard. The reason the deck is located on the side yard is there's an existing walkout. At the basement level. So the benefit of having. This walkout is we don't want to block it with the deck. And that's the consideration in this design that we're asking for this appeal to the side yard setback. It's an undersized lot. And. The house is located at an angle to the side yard property. We're increasing the nonconformity. With coverage and we're increasing the nonconformity with the side yard setback. And you could see the numbers on this elevation of what where we're at with the side yard. The mudroom addition. Is really the entry into the house from the back. And. They don't have a mudroom. You walk right into the kitchen. In the same location that the door is proposed. We're creating a little vestibule. And. The idea is that the their young children have a place to get in and store their stuff. They're hockey players.
The current coverage on the lot. Is 3,824 square feet.
Right.
A one Luke Tash speaking, the one acre lot. Only lasts 3,485 square feet. So whether or not there. It's an undersized lot or not, they're already. Way over what would be allowed even on a normal lot. And you want to go even higher over that to 4,072 square feet. Like that has nothing to do with a lot being undersized. You're way over what's permitted in a one acre zone now and even more. In the future.
Which was all granted by variance.
Well, no, it's granted up to 3,240. So you're 400 square feet over right now. What? What is permitted under the variance? I mean, 400 square feet over what what is permitted under the zoning and you want to. Go even higher to 4,072 square feet, which is. What is is much higher even than. You know, either what's under the variance or what's allowed in one acre zone in general, like you're already over what's allowed in one acres on and you want to go even more than that like this. Whether or not the lot's undersized or not, doesn't seem relevant in that context. Or the positioning of the house or any of these other factors. You're just over what's allowed on a one acre.
Can you talk a little bit more about the?
Part of this, part of the requirements in the zoning regulations is. A deck is higher than. The grade by three feet, it counts as coverage. So. The increase in coverage is majority of this is the deck, not the mudroom addition.
Well, how many square feet is the mudroom?
Five and a half by 10 feet. That's what we're adding for. The mudroom.
Lynn, can you zoom in on the right hand side?
Yeah, that's the first floor.
Yeah. There we go.
Yep. So you can see the mudroom. Which. 80% of this mudroom is over the existing deck. We're only extending it to the side property and asking for this variance. Because the deck is already in that position and you can see the dash line where the deck is coming out the back door. Yeah, right there. So you can see the the new deck is actually what's being counted in this coverage much more than the actual addition. The addition of the mudroom, if you look at that, it's three feet by five and a half feet. That's the space we're really asking for for the side yard setback of finished space. So there's our increase in coverage of the building. But the zoning regulations counts the raised deck area because it's above grade. And that's why we're. Showing this coverage much more than just the mudroom addition.
Yeah. It's. I. I'm less concerned about the mudroom. Than I am with the increase in coverage relative to the deck. I think. You know, Luke is right, even if this were not an undersized lot. You'd be over coverage right now and now you're asking for more and normally. When we're granting a variance, we're not. You know, we look very hard at things that increase the nonconformity. And, you know, we're going. Going above coverage, even if we say, you know, even if we acknowledge that it's an undersized lot. Is. Is certainly a concern of mine.
Okay. But you can see the angle of the property in relation to the house as it originally is sit.
Yes, but that's that is a different issue. That's a setback issue.
Okay.
Okay, that it. I mean, I understand what you're saying there. Not. You know. You're you're going a lot farther into the setback is right now you're at about. You know, you're going several feet more closer to the neighbor and I want to hear from anybody else that may be. On the. On the meeting, but. There and there. There's more than one ask here.
Yep.
Both of which increase the nonconformity and the one particularly over coverage is one that I have. A lot more sensitivity to.
If I lowered the deck, the new addition, the larger deck down to within 24 inches of grade, it wouldn't count in coverage, but it would still be the same structure.
I I understand that what you're saying, but it's the the rule is still the rule.
I understand.
And you're asking us to go. In the opposite direction. We're not reducing the the nonconformity. We're increasing it fairly significantly.
So one proposal that came up with the client is. The area right behind the existing family room. Is. Is the higher area of the deck and we're stepping down from there into this lower area. So. Potentially that they could reduce that size of the deck. And. Reduce the coverage. Mm hmm. And still have the area to put a table and some chairs. On the main deck.
This is Becky Walsh and I agree with John. I I'm just a little troubled by this ask. And I did go to the house and I actually took some pictures with my phone. Trying to figure out where you could reduce some of this coverage. And so what you're saying is to take off that whole sort of strip. That's this thin part of the deck. Is that right?
Yeah, it's almost considered a balcony from.
Right.
The upper house, which is raised, you know, the walkout.
So so how much coverage would you be eliminating if you did that?
Well, it's. It's almost 100 square feet. It's five by. I believe 20. Yeah, it would be close to 130 square feet. Almost 150. The the part on the right, which is south towards the driveway would be taken off too. So that's another three feet. So we'd be close to 150 feet.
Luke Tash speaking. You're looking at having to cut 248 square feet off just to stay within your already area that's over the coverage.
Right. But again, part of that is the mudroom addition.
I I don't understand the difference. You're still over the if you're at three, if you if you want, if the zoning allows 3,485 and one acre. And you're at 3,824. And you want 4,072 to get down to 3,824, you have to cut 248 feet off. It doesn't matter if it's a mudroom or or whatever. 248 square feet is 248 square feet.
Understood.
And that still runs you into the side setback with a 9.6. Feet, which is extremely close in a 25 foot zone. I mean, you already have a variance for. For what 12 feet? A little over 12 feet and then you you want to cut that by 25% basically.
Side yard setback relief and rear porch was down to 10 feet in 1955.
Is there any way you can do a new deck? Without increasing the coverage?
I could lower the deck within. Closer to grade and would not count in coverage. The reason the deck is on this north side is there's a walkout basement on. Under the family room. So it is location of the actual deck in relation to the access to the rear of the. First floor, which we have to rate, we have to get up from grade. Another nine feet to access the first floor. So grade it plays a potential here in the deck. So whether the stair is closer to the house and we drop the deck. Or we try to angle it more towards the south side away from the setback. We're we're. Pretty much going to enclose some of that walkout area and that's. Really potentially the only grade access they have in the rear of the property, which is that walkout. It's a recreational room. The rest of the first floor is well above the backyard. So there's a lot of constraints that we were trying to deal with and. That's why we're here tonight. that's why we're here tonight to to explain to you what some of these constraints are.
The current variance to the deck permits it twelve feet from the line, right? That's what your application says.
Right, but the house is over that setback. It's eleven point three feet is what we're asking for the deck. It aligns with the house. The the angle of the property is tapered as we get to the back. You can go back two slides, and you'll see the existing survey. That's the proposed. And here's the existing asset. And you can also see there's a septic field and tank coming out of that area that we're calling the walkout basement under the family room. Here's another potential limit that we can't expand the deck to that area.
Yeah, but I I I mean, that's not really hardship. You're not, you wouldn't go that direction or that far anyhow. You'd have a much bigger coverage problem than you currently.
If we lowered the deck, it wouldn't be a coverage issue. We're asking for the setback.
I I'm referring to your comment about the septic tank and the septic system.
Right.
If you were to go, i- i- if that were actually to come into play,
Yep.
you'd have a much bigger coverage issue than you're talking about. So I think it's a red herring.
Yeah, septic system's way back there in the yard.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, if you're on the property, you'll see there's a mound there, and I think the tank is a little closer to the house than what they're showing. But yes, the walkout basement is under the family room. The idea was not to block that because they lose that only access to the backyard from that grade level below.
I I'm sorry, what would block the access from from the grade level? You're saying if if you lowered the deck, that would block it?
Well, yeah, and then we would decrease the request for coverage increase because the deck would be lower. And it's a big portion of the deck that we're asking for this increase in coverage, right? It's another two hundred square feet. But that would mean that we'd lower it and try to stay within the setback. And you could see where the twenty-five foot setback line is. It would completely block the walkout basement area. And the idea of the deck to begin with, which they have now, is to have an access point from the rear of the house to the backyard, because there's really the only point at which they're coming out of the kitchen that they're using this deck.
But it, and it's also gonna be a deck above the new addition too, right?
Well, there there is a deck there now. We're enclosing a portion of that deck and increasing that, which is becomes a mudroom.
No, I'm saying if you look at your rear image of the house on your plans, it also shows a deck above. It shows a lot of decks in the back.
Well, that's a balcony that's pre-existing now. The balcony is three feet. It's a little less than three feet. It's actually unusable because it's so narrow.
Is that going to expand over the mudroom?
No, the the balcony off the family room is actually over the walkout area. It's considered a balcony because it's really raised over the backyard. It's up to the first floor low. And that was my first suggestion is if there's potentially the, to reduce the coverage that we're asking for, is that would be the first spot that I would say that the balcony right off the family room can be reduced to decrease the coverage request. And that would be close to a hundred and fifty square feet. So the site tapers. As you come off Silvermine Road, you're driving downward almost nine feet as you get to the back property. So it's a natural topography. Obviously, the house was sited closer to the road, facing the road. The access points are still in the same spot. We're enclosing a portion of the deck to create this mudroom. And finding a better place for this deck. So it's a little lower off the property.
Um, this is, this is Becky Walsh, and, um, I mean, I think for me to even consider, um, thinking about granting a variance here, I I'd have to see a substantial portion of the deck taken off. And even then, I'm not sure that I would be in favor of it, but, um, I just think it's way too big an ask.
So that portion of the deck off the family room, we could decrease by a hundred and fifty square feet coverage, which is considered a balcony.
I I'm getting the feel from the board that, um, you may want to, uh, continue this to really go back to the drawing board. I mean, it's it's totally up to you. You could have us vote on it. Um, by the way, Becky, you would be seated for this one, but, um, you could, you could have the choice of letting us go ahead and vote on it. Um, or you could continue, you could really go back to the drawing board. Do what you can, because it it doesn't seem like, in my opinion, that the, that there, I I'm not feeling the hardship at this point, and, um, it just seems like it was, it's really it, uh, on more of the excessive side. So if you would like to, a- and I can't even promise you that the variance would be granted even if you did go back there. But it may be for your client worth a try to go back, really try to cut it down and try again, because, um, I can tell by the reaction of the board that uh, this may, you you may not get this. So if it's totally, but it's totally your call.
Right, um, a considerable reduction in coverage or no coverage is what you're looking for. That's my question. Increase. Because the first question I have is, is the enlarging of the mudroom, which is a little more than the existing deck area towards the north property line? Is that at the minimum where what we're asking for, and then the deck is of new consideration?
I mean,
At the least?
Speaking, speaking for myself, this is John Mahoney.
Yep.
I if all we were discussing was the mudroom, I would have a lot less issue with it. I'd rather see the the coverage you're adding with mudroom offset by a reduction in coverage on the deck so that at least it's neutral. But to increase the deck as well and take this coverage way above what it would even be allowed if the lot were a full acre is just too big an ask. So the the mudroom alone, for me personally, is not a big issue. The mudroom with all the decking and everything else, now it's, you know, it's just too big an ask from my perspective.
Understood.
Okay.
Yep.
Luke Tash is speaking. You also have the, I'm I'm generally vote on these pretty parallel to John. But, um, you also have the issue with the side yard setback. I I think you should try to keep that at the twelve point one feet.
Well, okay.
I don't know if that's possible or not, but but I just, twelve point one to nine point six.
Right.
Have a two-story structure, nine point six feet from the the property lines is extremely close. It's a point one feet's extremely close.
For the deck right now, it's at ten feet because the side yard property is tapered. So if you see the back stair of the existing deck on the survey, it's closer than twelve feet.
Well, what the the ten feet, then I think, I think expanding that past the side yard setback is is another issue in my eyes to, from what it is now.
Okay, understood. Okay, so yes, a continuous would be great. Let me get back to the owners and work through some of these limits.
Laura, you're on mute. I, you're talking.
So Lynn, we're going to continue.
Okay, continue, Lynn.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to our next. Our next application is seven forty-seven Valley Road. Uh, zoning varies upon application of, and I apologize, um, it's a T O sequenza, authorized agent for Spencer and Stephanie Bogus, owner for a variance of section seven point one, point B, point two, to allow for expansion of a non-conforming structure in the two-acre zone at seven forty-seven Valley Road, map forty-four, five, block one, one, eight, lot three, seven. Uh, you may begin your, your presentation.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair, Lady, uh, members of the of the board. My name is Teo Sequenza. I am the architect for uh, my clients, the the Bogus. You know, we have, um, a property that I would like to share my screen, i- if that's okay? May I just share my screen?
No, you can't. You can't show your screen. It's only what was, um, provided in the application materials.
Oh, okay, well, okay.
Because you didn't send a presentation.
Yes, I did, okay. Uh, would it be possible to share my screen? Because I have an aggregated, um, presentation, if you will.
So that the presentation should have been sent and posted to the website.
Yeah, no, we have it. Uh, I I just want to be here, if if you.
So you can't share your screen.
I understand.
They posted to the website.
Okay, got it. So, uh,
So I can put up what was on the website.
Yeah, thank you.
And I can go through any of the, um, diagrams that you have here.
Okay, very good. Well, we we can start with, um, with a slide number. Uh, keep keep scrolling down, please. I would I would like to start with the the this line number sixteen, actually.
Okay.
Sixty, yeah, on the Yeah, sixteen or Yeah, very good. Thank you so much. We have our our property here. We have north up the screen. The property is located on the, uh, eastern side of Valley Road. Uh, it's a, it's a long tract of land, as you can see here with the red. And then this property, as the record show, has been built uh, around nineteen hundreds when it was a compliant lot. Uh, you can see that many of the residences here, you can see the one that I'm pointing here. Uh, if you can, I can, can you see my cursor?
No.
Okay, fine. So you can see the the property indicated number one thirty-six on top. You know, that that is also very close to the, to the, to the street. And and also our parcel, you know, which is seven forty-seven, and it's shown with the number thirty-seven. And also, uh, property nine, uh, one eighteen, I'm coming down the road. You know, a lot, a lot of the songs were built very close to the, to the property line. So now I can, um, probably go to the slide number fourteen, miss. Yeah, that's good. That's good. So, eh, eh, that's good. As as you can see here, the the existing dwelling unit is very close to the property line, about eleven something feet. And the, you can see where the forty-five feet line actually crosses through the back of the house. So a- a- anything that, um, this family wants to do is is affected. You know, in this particular case, it's just a small, uh, breakfast room that we're proposing, which is the the hatched area. You know, which is a small addition of a, of about, um, you know, kind of fifty square feet. But I actually, the house was a little deeper, and it was all the way back to the forty-five foot line, then I I wouldn't be in front of you. But the cast is not, the the house is not deep enough. So I am shy four feet in here, eh, wh- which is actually the the request and the reason that I'm here. That that small section that the the lady is pointing out, that's really the the requesting here. The this proposed addition, which is a small breakfast room, is in the back of the property. It's hardly visible from the road. It would be good-looking. It won't present any adverse effect to visually to any of the neighbors. It's a one-story addition. And the environmentally is is also surrounded by by walls in there, if you can point out, miss. You know, the the there are sites, the sidewalks. You know, you you have one going left to right. Continue, please, all the way to the back. And then we have a also a stone wall in the back. So a- any, any work that will be happening here will be fully contained because I know that the environmentally is, um, it's a sensible area, but we have been in front of the, of the other department. So the requesting here is to ask for this very minimal variance that will allow my client to enjoy the property and have a little breakfast area next to their kitchen, next to their family room. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
This is John Mahoney. How, how far in front of the forty-five foot setback is this, uh, breakfast room? So the, that area that Lynn is pointing out.
Four feet. Four feet.
Four feet.
Yes.
John, the whole house is in the front yard setback.
Yeah.
So I don't, I I don't even understand how this, I have trouble imagining how this is even not, like, needs a variance. Because it's behind the house. It's not, it's not encroaching more on the front yard setback because the, it's behind the existing house. Like, if you look at the definition of a front yard.
Yeah, why?
The area from the front of the house to the road.
So the house, so it's a, it's structurally non-conforming. Um, and so the how, the structure is non-conforming, and now you're expanding the non-conformity. And that's where you're expanding the non-conformity.
But we're not expanding it into the front yard. We're not expanding it into the front yard setback. The front yard setback's staying eleven point six feet.
No, 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 no. The front yard setback is that dash line is the forty-five foot line.
But the front yard is the area between the front of the building and the street. So how do you have a front yard on the back of a house?
Because the house, because the house was built a long time ago.
The whole house.
That's a rear yard. The area behind the house is the rear yard.
So so there's a setback that you're required to have in each zone. The required setback here is forty-five feet. They're currently in front of the setback, and they're setback at eleven point six feet. They want to expand what's not a non-conforming structure to expand a non-conforming. They want to expand what's not a non-conforming structure, to expand a non-conforming structure, they need to come before you in this zone to get a variance.
But Derek's asking for variance for the front yard setback in the rear yard of the house, that doesn't make any sense.
Well, it's still a high, it's rich character, but, but it's still backed up against the road, so I guess that's just what you have to look at. I hear you, Luke, but it, you know, you still have the road in their back, that you need to be forty-five feet from when they're not.
But we'd be granting, and what I'm, I'm saying though, is we'd be granting a front yard setback in the rear yard of a house, the front yard is defined as the area between the house and the street, and the rear yard is defined.
I, I, I think the, the front yard, for zoning purposes, has nothing to do with where the house sits.
It does, I've got the definition right here, look at the definition of yard in section two point two. It's on page thirty-nine, at least of what I have, the version I have.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I see what you're saying, but I think that the setback is honestly intended to be a front yard is a distance from the street to where the house should be, not necessarily where it is.
That's not what the definition says, John.
I, I understand, Luke, but I think that that's an inconsistent, um and look, I, I don't have a problem with what's being asked here. I just wanted to know how big the, the, the issue was, but eh, any, it's a non-conforming, legal non-conforming use, because it was built originally as are many of the homes in this town, the very old homes on the street.
Yeah, well, the, 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 the use is conforming because it's residential, it's just a dimensional eh, eh frontier that is not conforming.
You're correct, I agree, it's not a, a, a use issue, it's where the house is located, it's non-conforming.
Yeah, so here we are in front of you, all members, thank you for listening to me, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. And, and I am also, I, I, I share, eh, Mr. Luke, let me call you that way, eh, eh, your concern, and then eh, it, it's kind of confusing, but then here we are in front of you and asking for your assistance here for my clients.
I don't know if there's any neighbors for or against it, I'd move to grant it in light of there being a hardship with the whole lot being, and the whole house being in the front yard.
Yeah.
In, in that, you know, the definitions being inconsistent here, because we're granting a variance for the front yard setback in the rear yard of the house.
So, so just to add some clarity, there's a definition for, for yard, and a definition for yard setback, and this would be a yard setback as opposed to a yard.
The minimum required.
But I'm saying the yard setback's already violated, it's already eleven point one feet, or whatever it was.
Exactly, it is.
So we're not making it more.
The whole house is in the setback.
So we're not making it more non-conforming, because it's off the back of the house.
We, technically, we are, Luke, but I think it's form over substance, we're adding square footage in the setback, that's what makes it m- more non-conforming.
So it goes into the setback?
Yeah, eh, you're adding square footage in the setback. So if you go, if you go back to where, Lynn, if you could bring the sheet back up that you were showing. There's the hatched area, Laura, where the, the um where they're adding. See the hatched area here?
Yes.
You see the area to the left of the dash line where Lynn is showing?
Yes.
That's adding to the non-conformity, you're adding square footage in the setback.
Right.
Okay, I agree with, I, I mean, I have no problem with this um ask. But that, that's what the ask is, is to add those square feet. If the, if, is, he correctly said, if this building was built forty feet or, or maybe thirty-three feet farther to the east, he wouldn't even have to come ask us.
Uh huh, yeah.
Yeah, this is Becky Walsh, I have no problem with this ask either, and eh, it's not even like they're asking for the whole breakfast room, um it's just a, a corner of it.
Right.
This is Cynthia Dell, I have no problem with this, um, walking around the house, you're not gonna even be able to see this from the screen.
I agree.
All right, it's, okay, let's go into our, let, let's just, um, is there, uh, okay, Rich Carrotto, you're gonna be seated for this one, I.
Sure.
Um, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this variance? Is there anyone here that would like to speak as opposed to the variance? Okay, let's go into our business session, it sounds like we've got some opinions anyway, but if anyone else would like to make a last comment. Okay, do I hear a, a, a motion?
I move that we grant the uh variance as requested due to the age of the home and its siding on the lot.
And I second that motion, Dell.
Okay, we'll go, we'll.
I'd move to modify it, and the additional encroachment being on the rear side of the house.
Uh, I feel like, did we need to discuss that beforehand, before we, I don't think we could just add that, I think we needed to discuss that.
Oh, we can modify the motion.
Okay.
So.
Did you want to discuss that for the rest of the board members?
I don't have an issue with it.
I don't.
With adding, with adding that onto the.
The, the, the additional non, adding that the additional non-conformity is on the rear of the house.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, Rich Carrington's fine with it.
Okay, all right, we'll start our vote, Cynthia?
Dell in favor.
John?
Mahoney in favor.
Luke?
Ashton in favor.
Rich?
Rich Carrington in favor.
Uh Edmund's in favor. Okay, your variance is granted.
Thank you, Chair Lady, thank you, all members, good night.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all of our applications today, let's talk about our um minutes from the last one. Does anyone have any comments for?
I have, I have one comment, um in terms of uh twenty-six Kimberly Place, should we be noting that that was withdrawn? It really is no just.
Say that again, I'm sorry, Cynthia.
For twenty-six Kimberly Place, when you read through it, uh my understanding is that it was withdrawn before we even got to it.
Oh.
It really doesn't have a disposition as to what happened. Should, and, and I don't know, maybe it's okay the way it's written.
What do you think, Lynn? You're muted.
Sorry, say that again, I missed what you were saying, sorry.
Twenty-six Kimberly Place, when you read the minutes, it doesn't state that it was withdrawn.
And we, um, I mean, we can edit it, I think they continued it, and they withdrew it at a later date, and we noted it was withdrawn. Um, they pursued a, um, a lesser option that they could do under a zoning permit.
Right, but we don't have that in the minutes, so we don't need to state that, that it was withdrawn, because it's just, looks like.
Um, it was withdrawn, we have a letter in the file, um, I can, we can, we can edit the minutes if you'd like us to.
Don't have to, that's fine, no, I just have clarification.
Okay, any other comments about the minutes? Okay, uh, all those in favor to approve the minutes?
Aye. You have favor.
Aye.
Rich Carrington in favor.
Mahoney in favor.
Dell in favor.
Walsh in favor.
Edmund's in favor, okay, that's unanimous.
Did you, did someone make a motion, and someone second that?
Uh, no, I guess not, um, I move to um approve the minutes.
I second, Dell seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Sorry, um, that's unanimous now. And um, okay, did we want to, um, it was brought up earlier about possibly going into um, in-person meetings, um, did you want to talk about that? How do we, how, how does the board feel about that?
I'm fine with it.
It's Rich Carrington, everything else that we, you know, that I've been involved with in the town, has been in person for about a month and a half, two months now, so if the rest of the board wants to do it, I'm fine also, I mean, obviously Zoom does make it very convenient, you know, I'm still at my desk at work here, and it's you know, uh, it's convenient, but that's only a selfish reason for me, but, yeah, eh, eh, a lot of activities are in person.
Yeah, I mean, we could still do a hybrid, eh, is that correct, so if someone wanted to attend the meeting, Lynn, but was stuck at work or needed to stay at their office, would you just need a notice um before that, or how, how can that work?
So if we advertise the meeting as hybrid, both members of the public, um applicants and the members of the board could appear um on Zoom, or they could appear in person.
Okay.
For administrative reasons, we just need to know in advance what you guys are planning to do, but um it's open for anyone who's attending the meeting to attend that way.
Okay, so, I, I'm sorry, so you would need an advanced notice if it's hybrid, we just say that it's hybrid.
Yeah, just from the members of the board, just so we know how to set up the room, and um
Okay.
Who, who, who needs a, a Zoom link and all of that, just to make sure everyone has the right stuff, that's an internal administrative, but everyone can attend either via Zoom or in person.
Okay. Um and I think what, I know board members have expressed that it is important to them to start getting some of the, more of the um uh, you know, the materials, uh, it's, it is hard to see and um, you know, really get a thorough look at what the plans are. Um, you know, because I, during, sometimes I like to mark them up and um circle them, or really get a good look, and I, it seems like other board members are feeling the same way, is there any way that, how would you like us to handle that, do we request that, or could we just say moving forward that we can have the materials again, or, or how, how do you?
Would you like, eh, for all the applications, you want people to hand in um hard copies, for you guys to receive hard copies, as opposed to electronic copies, the Planning and Zoning Commission opted to keep everything online preferably, and only when they request hard copies, be, large hard copies be um come in from the applicant, so do you guys want to go back to receiving hard copies of the application in an online version?
I, I feel like, does, how did the other board members feel about that, am I the only one who's not, is having a hard time seeing it?
I prefer that.
You prefer it also?
Eh, eh, in paper again, I mean, it's really hard printing these things on like crema size paper and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, particularly the surveys and things like that, that are enlarged, I, I find it, you know, kind of irritating to have to zoom in and out, and the panning doesn't always work, and
Yeah.
So, you, you know, and I, I, my preference would be to actually walk the property with the survey, right now, I can't do that, because you can't print it out to where it's uh legible.
Right. Okay, so, yeah, it sounds like the board members would like to have the hard copies, so that we were able to see it. I think it's important. And can I just ask a question also, Lynn, is that, so the gentleman um that was not, he said he did not, um you mentioned that he did not have his presentation submitted, um that he wanted to add, if he were in front of us, would he have been able to hand that out to us, or would that?
Hybrid meeting, it would all have to be remote, you can't just hand out hard copies unless there's an electronic version that's exactly the same that can be displayed on screen, because now you have people in two different locations potentially, that includes participants, um attendees, the applicant, so it has to be electronic, so everyone can be looking at the same stuff. Um, so, and um, so he couldn't just bring a board and show it to you anymore, they have to show it to you electronically, and it would be, it would be displayed on the screen.
Okay.
I, I got the impression that his presentation was actually what you had, Lynn. And he just, he just wanted the ability to use his cursor to, you know.
So he, there's um, with the way the meetings are written, when we do electronic, and they're supposed to be just uh put up at least twenty-four hours before the meeting, so everyone on all sides can see it. Um, he did not send us a presentation, so we would have posted it um by Thursday or Friday before close of business.
But what did you have?
Whatever, with the, what, what was online, he had put together, um, I mean, it looked like a presentation.
Oh.
Oh, I see, so he has some more.
Similar to what the first applicant had, they had a, a presentation they put together, and it was displayed on the actual website, so you, you could have looked through the presentation in advance.
I got you. Yeah, I mean, that last presentation, or the last, the Valley Road one, it was sort of a no-brainer, but I could tell he, it, it was hard for him to try and tell you where to put your cursor, you know, eh, if we were all sitting there live in a boardroom, he would be you know, showing us on his big board that they bring in, so.
So, but they can't bring a big board anymore, that's the point, it's on, it's still gonna be on the screen, and there are screens in, um, in the room, where it can be displayed.
Why can't someone bring plans anymore with them?
So if you hold a hybrid meeting, it has to be the same presentation.
So let's cancel the hybrid, just have, go back to how we did it.
Yeah, I guess. Guess we could do that.
Almost all the meetings at Town Hall are being held in hybrid format, that's a typical preference for Town Hall.
Well, the problem though is then we can't get presentations like we used to, like, if it's gonna be on a screen, what's the point of going back in, you might as well sit at home and do it, it's more convenient.
Well, only, you could get the hard copy, but when they present it has to be on the screen, right, Lynn?
Correct.
Well, let's, let's start off with a hybrid and see how it goes, if it's still not what we are, what, you know, I think it will definitely add to our experience to have a hard copy there, and have us all together there, and at least it'll, will be, get a better explanation or a clearer explanation. Even if it's right in front of us, and we could just refer back to the hard copy that's there. So maybe we can start off with a hybrid, and if we still feel like it's not working, and we want to be able to have um the uh boards, or go back to the way it was, we can, we can figure it out then, does that sound okay?
So just so you know, in the, in your old meeting room, where you guys used to hold your meetings, there is an extremely large screen that is larger than any board that any applicant will bring, so you can actually see everything really well.
Okay. All right, so we've got a technology upgrade, it seems like.
Right.
Correct.
That's good.
Yeah, maybe we should use it, right?
Maybe we should use it, that's good. I mean, all right, so here's a question, will, would we be masked, or how do we, how, how are the?
There is no masking requirement at Town Hall, it's optional.
Okay.
So eh, if you choose to mask, you're welcome to mask, if you choose not to mask, you're welcome to unmask.
Okay. All right, sounds good, so let's, moving forward, we'll go into a hybrid situation.
So for the next meeting, you'd like to schedule a hybrid meeting?
We would like to schedule a hybrid meeting, but please tell the applicants that the board is requiring a hard copy, that we, okay? We would like to schedule a hybrid meeting, but please tell the applicants that the board is requiring a hard copy that we, okay?
We'll change. Yep.
Sound good to everyone?
Can we say we prefer that presenter is attentive person? I just think it's, it's much better with them. If we're going to be there in person, and they're just sitting on a screen, it like seems to me kind of pointless.
So you can mention that. You can require it, because the way the, the law has been written, it's, um, they can attend either via Zoom or in person.
So I, I just don't know why we'd go there and sit there in person to watch this on a screen. It just doesn't make sense to me.
So we've had it, just to, I mean, I don't know if anyone is watching the Zooms from the Planning and Zoning Commission, but we've been running hybrid meetings since last July. And they've run pretty well. Most applicants do come in person, but sometimes parts of applicant teams, and sometimes even the applicants themselves do appear on Zoom.
But when they, if they hear that we're there.
They'll come.
Though, hopefully, they will come. If they, if they, you know, you could tell them that we're, we are there, and we would like a hard copy.
I see Dave Rucci still on this call. I don't know if it's just his computer left open, but I wonder how he feels about it. Would he come?
Well, this is just a discussion of the board.
Oh, okay. All right. And the next meeting is July eleventh?
It is.
Okay.
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 All right, is there any other business that we need to discuss? Okay. Uh, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, night.
Good night.